Good evening Vacaville, this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting, May 9th, 2023. With that, can we have a roll call?
Council agency authority members Stockton?
Here.
Richie?
Here.
Silva?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Wiley?
Here.
Mayor Chair Carley?
Here. Will you stand with me for a moment of silence? Councilmember Chapman, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the allegiance and to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So with that, item three, the approval of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, I'd like to swap nine A and nine C, being that we're going to have an item.
Yep.
An item on measure M, and there's a presentation on measure M, and I feel that probably would be in our best interest to have that update first, if we could do that.
I would concur Mayor, so we'll, we can do that, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have the approval of the minutes, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to item five, and we have several proclamations tonight, and bear with me, it was very interesting when I opened the first one and signed all these earlier, and this one is the May 2023 Older Americans Month. And I'm finding myself, we were chuckling up here on the dais, some of us fit that now, we call it wisdom. But I'd like to, I'd like to read this, and I don't have my glasses, that's the older American side as well. Whereas the city of Vacaville recognizes the increasing growth of the aging population and is committed to providing needed services and opportunities for residents of all ages to participate in community life. And whereas Vacaville is home to more than 20,000 citizens aged 60 or older who are part of a growing population with evolving needs that contribute to the social and economic fabric of the community. And whereas our community can provide recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, providing individualized services and support system to maintain the dignity, independence, and self-determination of older Americans as they age. Combating ageist attitudes by honoring their past, present, their present and future contributions. And whereas our McBride Senior Center was founded in 1967, sorry about that, and serves the aging population where they are at while building the path to inclusiveness and the changing needs of residents as they age. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 2023, Older Americans Month. To all of you, thank you for Vacaville, and do I, do I have someone that I could, there we go, come on forward.
And good evening council members, my name is Zee DeLeon, and I'm the Recreation Supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department. Each year, May is recognized as Older Americans Month, and at the McBride Senior Center, we are family to older Americans in the Vacaville community. The Parks and Recreation Department engages our older population through fitness classes such as yoga, tai chi, and zumba, recreational programs such as bingo, painting classes, and music socials, our popular trips and tours outings, pre-social support programs such as health insurance counseling and advocacy programs, notary services, legal aid, and special multicultural events such as Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, and Senior Citizen Day to enhance the quality of life for active aging adults. Special thanks to the staff and volunteers that make a difference in our active aging community. The Parks and Recreation Department is excited to collaborate with this inspiring group of people and organizations with a shared mission to connect with our older population in ways that increase choices, equity, and well-being for all Vacavilleans. Thank you.
Good to see you all, very different on this side.
Yes. Thank you Mayor Carley. Good evening Vice Mayor Wiley and members of the city council. National Police Week is celebrated every third week in May and offers the opportunity for honor, remembrance, and peer support while allowing law enforcement survivors and citizens to gather and pay respects to those peace officers who gave their lives in the line of duty. According to the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund, 64 officers were shot and killed in the line of duty in 2022. This continues a disturbing trend of an increase in firearms-related deaths compared to the average number of officers killed by gunfire each year in the prior decade. The 64 deaths by gunfire in 2022 continues to represent an increase of 21% compared to recent historical norms. In California, eight law enforcement officers died in the line of duty in 2022. I, speaking on behalf of the officers and staff of the Vacaville Police Department, want to share that we are honored to serve this community and feel the support of Vacaville citizens and leaders alike. Thank you Mayor Carley and the other members of the city council for this proclamation and recognition of the continued sacrifices of the men and women of law enforcement and those who proudly serve as peacekeepers within the Vacaville Police Department. Thank you.
Say there, because I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Vacaville play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community. And whereas our nation's law enforcement officers serve with courage, dedication, and strength, they fearlessly enforce our laws even at the risk of personal peril, safeguarding our property, our liberty, our lives, and we owe them and their families our full and enduring support. Whereas our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the city of Vacaville, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 14th through the 20th, 2023, National Police Week. Congratulations. And we haven't, we have actually two more, so can we have Paula Ledoux, our Clinical Services Administrator, come forward? Would you like to share anything?
Sure, okay, I know you're going to do the proclamation first, I'm sorry. Good evening Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, and council members. Mental Health Awareness Month has been observed in May in the United States since 1949. The theme for Mental Health Awareness Month this year is Look Around and Look Within. From our neighborhoods to genetics, many factors impact our mental health. We encourage everyone to consider how the world around you affects your mental health. This includes considering the importance of access to safe and stable housing, healthy home environments, safe neighborhoods, and access to parks and nature. And I hear pickleballs, great for mental health. Another shout out just to our housing departments and also Parks and Rec with the clinical services activities that we have and programs, we work closely with those departments as well, and it just kind of, I think, shows how everything that the city does and employees of the city do is important for the well-being of all community members, and that impacts mental health. I would also like to highlight some of the programs specifically provided by clinical services in the police department that provide support to those facing mental health challenges. The Youth Services section of our police department includes school resource officers, family support workers, and licensed mental health clinicians who supervise counseling interns. This past school year, 10 graduate student interns from several area universities provided mental health counseling to general education students at 13 schools in the Vacaville Unified School District, including elementary, middle, and high schools. Interns provided 1,085 counseling sessions to 165 unduplicated students throughout the school year, helping youth cope with a wide variety of therapeutic concerns. And of these students, 32 expressed some form of suicidal ideation and were formally assessed for the appropriate level of intervention. These counseling supports are available to students attending participating public schools, free of charge. Our police department is also home to the Family Resource Center for Vacaville, where any community member is welcome to meet with a family support worker for a comprehensive assessment, followed by either in-house services or outside referrals to the supports that they need. Family support workers meet with their clients for follow-up appointments for a minimum of six months to check in and ensure that their needs continue to be met. In 2022, family support workers assisted community members with 120 in-office visits, 414 phone or Zoom appointments, and 312 walk-in meetings. The Family Resource Center provided basic needs assistance, including rent and utility assistance, crisis counseling, victim advocacy, and referrals to ongoing treatment. The purpose of Mental Health Awareness Month is to educate the public about the importance of mental wellness and to decrease the stigma of mental illness. Police department staff, including officers, mental health clinicians, and family support workers, play a vital role in responding to those in crisis and providing ongoing supports. Anyone in the community seeking support can call the Family Resource Center at 707-469-6608, and we will help link you to the appropriate level of care. And I just wanted to thank council for your ongoing support of the clinical program that we do have at the city of Vacaville, I know it helps a lot of people, and we really appreciate your support. Thank you, and thank you for the proclamation.
Well, I haven't read it yet, but first and foremost, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing, I'm very familiar with both the Family Resource Center and for those who are not, and our Clinical Services Division. It's unique, it's one of a kind, there's very few cities in the entire nation, especially of our size, that have anything like what we have here. You and your team helped to certify those, to get their, you know, their clinician certificates, and so through that process that we manage, we provide, you provide through your staff, those counseling services that is invaluable for the health of our families through the students in this, also through the FRC. I saw it firsthand, and it's the most amazing thing that, that you're a part of, and I'm so thankful that it's here in Vacaville. With that, I want to read the proclamation, and that is, whereas the mental health of our citizens is essential to the emotional and economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses. Mental illness affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and income levels, and all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. There's a strong body of research that supports specific tools that Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their mental health and well-being. And whereas feelings of personal shame and fears of social stigma and discrimination prevent many citizens living with mental illness from seeking help. The National Mental Health Association reminds us all that seeking help is a sign of strength, not a weakness. Whereas the early and effective treatment, many individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the city of Vacaville, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 2023, Mental Health Awareness Month. So thank you. Last but not least, if I could have Tim Patton, our Economic Development Manager, come forward? Well, it's not Tim, it looks like it's going to be Don Burris, our Economic Development Director. Good evening, Don.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Would you like me to, okay, great, I'm very happy to do this this evening. Every May is a National Small Business Month, and we're really happy to partner with our big four partners, our big four partners are the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville and Downtown Vacaville, collectively, we call ourselves the big four, and we work together to create programs and activities to help support all of our businesses and small businesses alike. So just to give you a little background, Small Business Month is a special celebration month created by the Small Business Administration to celebrate small businesses. It's always in the month of May every year, and it's a special tribute to celebrate small businesses, their courage, community efforts, and hard work for the entire month. Here's something I always love getting as fact, did you know that small businesses are considered the backbone of the United States? As of new data that we just received last year, 31.7 million of our businesses are small businesses in the United States employing less than 10 people. So they really are the backbone of our country and the unsung heroes of the American dream. The city of Vacaville, we have more than 4,000 small businesses throughout the city and over 400 just in our downtown core alone. To celebrate and assist our small businesses, the Vacaville Chamber, Visit Vacaville, and Downtown Vacaville, and the Solano-Napa Small Business Development Center have a variety of programs scheduled this month to help, to help our small businesses. And to support the small business community, the Economic Development Department is currently running a series of radio spots on KUIC Radio to encourage our residents to shop small and to shop local, and I'd like to encourage you all to do the same this month. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to read portions of this because some of this actually you just read, so you, you're good on your statistics. This proclamation, whereas small businesses employ 40% of the employees in the private sector in our country and contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas along with the advocacy groups such as the Solano-Napa County Small Business Development Center, the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville, and public and private organizations across the country which have endorsed Small Business Month. Today, the city of Vacaville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 2023, Small Business Month. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Before I move on, I just want to see if the council wanted to make any comments, because we had four great proclamations, this is really the work that we do. And in as much as I made the proclamation, is there any, any of you that wanted to share a few words? We'll just keep it short so that we don't have to belabor it tonight, but I think this is important, this is the work that our staff does, and that's why we do these proclamations from, from the dais. So, Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. I will share, would like to make comments on the one pertaining to mental health, mental health illness. I had the honor of presenting yesterday evening to an adult class, and I wanted to hear from them, and they're all local residents. Mental health was a topic of choice. Many of those in attendance spoke of their personal issues with mental health, and they weren't shy about it. They, they were very open, and they're saying they need more help. And the last thing I would like to share pertaining to what I heard last night is that Kaiser is limited with mental health professionals right now, and the individuals are having to go outside of the area to seek treatment. And even in doing so, there's not enough employees, they don't have enough employees in that field to assist the need. So, thank you.
Councilmember Silva?
Thank you for highlighting that, Dr. Chapman, or Councilmember Chapman. So like, later this month, Councilmember Richie and I were actually going to be hosting a listening session at Pacifica Services, System Living, yeah, thank you. And so some more information will be, be going out there, but it's, you know, just reflective of the proclamation and the announcement, you know, that there's a lot that goes on, a lot of different needs that exist within our community. And I would say that everybody past current and past, as far as council and staff have been really interested and dedicated on how we find ways to best serve all our, all our constituents, all our residents, and so you know, when folks have worked their whole life, worked hard, you know, we want to make sure that, that within reason, we can help them achieve the quality of life and ensure the quality of life that, that they've earned, to make sure we do what we can to protect it. So that session at the end of the month, just, just to hear back, just to see what's going on and see what ways we can help advocate for different issues. Police, Police Week, can't extend my appreciation enough for Chief Smushler's leadership coming on. You know, the, you know, policing in itself over the evolution of this nation. It's gone through a lot of ups and downs, and for me, I'm really proud to see how every member of that department and people within our community, you know, depending on, you know, what, how they view things or, you know, how they communicated their issues. I'm really happy to see how we progressed over time to meet the different demands and be patient with our, with ourselves and have grace throughout the whole process. And so I, I see our department continuing to live by, live with integrity and act with integrity and a commitment to our community. And I think that's reciprocated from our community to our, our, not just our police department, but all public safety. So, mental health awareness, I've lost three friends through the years, last few years, or acquaintances to suicide, so the worst, one of the worst outcomes, there's a lot of other folks struggling with a lot of other mental health issues. One of the things that I'm hoping to get support from the community is, they actually have this mental health first aid. So typically around the holidays, we start seeing the increase, increase issues associated with mental health. So I'm thinking sometime around fall, be on the lookout to see the rollout of different mental health first aids, so the goal for that is to have small groups, just kind of focused on learning on, learning about different issues of how to help maybe ourselves, or help our loved ones or friends that are in those particular situation. Last month, we had a listening session on small businesses, so a lot of great, different input that was provided there. One of the key things I think that I'm very mindful of and that I heard a common theme about was different resources that are available to support small businesses. There is a lot of different resources out there, but I would imagine when you're starting up anything new, there's so much information out there, so how do you go about that? So we kind of interested to see how, how we move forward. One thing I was hoping to get more out of that session that I really want to follow. Trying to knock it all out today. Thank you Mayor. That's it, that's good.
Appreciate it. I just want to keep it to the proclamation and not get into some of the council business. Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you, I just kind of follow up on what some of my fellow council members have brought up, the importance of mental health. Just this morning, sorry, one of my, one of my buddies from Team Rev God took his own life. Rain Corps veteran, I worked with him all over the country responding to natural disasters, and yeah, left behind two kids, and yeah. He had plenty of people reach out to you, nobody knew there was any issues at all, so yeah. Due to the amount of first responders and veterans we have in our community, it should be a very important topic for all of us. Thank you.
Sorry to hear that. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Wiley?
I just want to say that as an older American, I see a lot of people that are in this age bracket really reaching out and helping a lot of people in the community. And then it's great that there is time and ability to reach out to others, and they serve, the police are out serving. And, um, they serve, the police are out serving all the time, reaching out throughout our community. Small businesses are always serving our community at our cleanup. We had a small business helping. So they, they have a lot of service, but they also have needs. And so that's where the mental health comes in. Mental health issues can come across the spectrum of professions and across the ages. So we need to be able to serve people and listen when they have an issue. We need mental health providers like Kaiser's needing more. There's always a need for more. But you can be that for someone else when you just listen to someone, or if you need something, talk to someone. So all these proclamations are related because we all have service, we all have needs, and we all need to listen and work together.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Dr.
Yes, um, I just wanted, I, I won't reiterate too much of what everyone has said, but, uh, Councilmember Roberts, I just want you to know you're not alone in losing loved ones. And you and family of your friend are in my prayers. And I, I, I'm very proud that our city, our, our city leadership here and my colleagues, along with our city, continue to proclaim a passion for trying to help all four of these different, um, topics or different people that fall within these categories. And, and I'm proud to be up here to, to work with each of you to really make sure that we, we show our, our aging population that we care about them, to make sure that we not only honor the sacrifice of the law enforcement officers that have paid the ultimate price protecting our communities, but also to value the ones that are still putting the uniform on, uh, day in and day out and responding to calls for service when people, um, have no one else to help them. Mental health is such a huge issue in this community, and, and it affects everything that we, every decision that we make up here. There is almost a mental health component to that, and so many byproducts from that for related to housing or homelessness or related to, you know, just, just some of the things that, that affect our quality of life here. And small business, right? Small businesses are the backbone of our community. So I'm just very proud that, um, we have, there's a lot of proclamations, but these are all super important things, um, for our community and I would say for our country. And I'm glad that as a council collectively, we've all been so passionate at trying to make sure that we pay homage and, and honor all of these different people in these.
Thank you. Councilmember Richie.
Thank you so much. After hearing Jason, it is, life, life's amazing. What, what seems important is really important, that much more. I mean, small business, I'm just proud, but who cares? Like, they'll wake up tomorrow, open the doors with their businesses. That doesn't matter today. After what Robert said, that's important. It's, I've made a career. Uh, my dad was in the U.S. Air Force pilot. I was talking to him today. I can tell he's getting older. I can tell. So it was a whole new story, but, um, I love him, I love your dad, but, um, it's, it's serious. I've, I've really talked to a lot of officers, first responders, and then there's so many people that when we start to build these friendships, started to listen to stories. A lot of people that are going through pain. I'm on the school board. Now imagine how many kids eighteen are going through a lot of stuff. They're like screaming inside. But it's, it's something that we really need to take, take, uh, awareness. I mean, I hope everyone gets to the age of being called old American. A lot, a lot of people aren't making it there. A lot of officers, first responders, a lot of military. I mean, more people in the military get killed after they get out from mental health related suicides than actually behind a gun or in battle. Like, these are things that they don't talk about. Where there's kids that are really affected the last two years, there's adults that are affected. So, um, there's four things here, but I would really, and I know, be, police really fall into the area of mental health, and they need help. Stuff they see is, is pretty, is pretty crazy. I have a lot of friends are firefighters. The calls they go on, it, it, it screws you up sometimes. And so we really need to address people we call heroes because they need help too. And the kids are, the last few years went tough, so. Wish we can come together and just really focus on mental health, making sure that everyone can make it to their golden years with the ability to enjoy it. I really appreciate your passion, Jason.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you all for your, your thoughts and your comments. It's, uh, it's humbling to know what, what our city is capable of doing in service, and this is our staff. So thank you, the staff, but, it is also a very revealing subject of, of everything that is about wellness. And that's what a community is, because it comes down to all the things that make up a community, but it comes down to our individual families and friends and loved ones. And so finds us of what's really important. So. With that, we're gonna move on to item six. It's our consent calendar. Anyone wishing? Sorry.
Six A, because it's within, uh, certain distance of my house. Need to recuse myself from it.
You say you'll refuse yourself from six A?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else on the, on the council wishing to pull an item for any reason? Anyone from the public wishing to pull an item from consent? All right, seeing, seeing done at this point, what we will do, can I entertain a motion to, um, approve items six B through E? Motion six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we have, uh, item six A.
Motion approved six A.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that will pass separately, and we will move on from there. Next on our agenda is Business From the Floor. This is a time for anyone from the public wishing to address the council on an item not on, on the agenda, but within our jurisdiction. So come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Margie Stern, and I am a former parent of a child with a disability who died. I'm also a speech pathologist. I'm on the Play For All Park Committee. And, um, I wanted to address the fact that the parking, well, first of all, the Play For All Park Phase One has opened, and we're really, really excited about that. And it's a very popular park. Everybody goes there. It's wonderful. We have thirty-four parking spaces. So people are parking in the dirt, people are parking on the street, they're parking on the other side of the street, and they're crossing over with their children on Elmira Road. So I would like to bring to the attention of, and I wrote a letter to each of you. I don't know if any of you got it today. I sent a letter, an email to each of you that, um, we need help to expand the parking at Play For All Park. We have gotten a grant from the state to finish Phase Two, but it does not include the parking. And of course, as you know, that the cost of everything has gone up, materials and everything. We would like to expand the parking to a hundred and ten spaces. And there's a plan, uh, a drawing to include that. And so I'd like to, um, encourage you to perhaps use some district money from the city to help us expand the parking so that while we're doing Phase Two, people can safely come out there and use Phase One. Um, Phase Two is the two Challenger baseball fields and the, the two dog parks and also the trails. And that is what this, the money from the state will be paying for. And so we would, I just would like to encourage you to help us fix that parking, because it's, you've probably been out there. It's, it's quite a mess. Not only that, people are parking in the dirt, and then other people are parking in the space which takes you to the dirt, so then they don't have a way to get out. So we need help. So I would just like to raise the consciousness about that we would like to increase the parking lot, um, at the Play For All Park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Darlene Crumbo. I have called Vacaville home since nineteen eighty-five. I have been a small business owner in downtown Vacaville for thirty-three years. I am a pickleball player. I started pay, playing pickleball in twenty twenty-one. My sister and brother-in-law taught a group of my friends and I how to play, and we've been playing ever since. I have met such nice, wonderful people here in Vacaville, but some have moved to Fairfield when they got their dedicated courts built last summer. I stayed here in Vacaville where my nice community is. I wanna play here. Since pickleball does not have designated courts in Vacaville, we are often kicked off the tennis courts by the tennis community teaching lessons, um, and we can't play. We have the pickleball lines painted on the tennis courts at North Orchard and Three Oaks Community Center from twenty fifteen. It is discouraging to attend Parks meetings and not be heard, or to realize the master plan is a five, seven, or ten-year plan. We have gathered a group of pickleball players and formed a nonprofit five oh one C three Vacaville Pickleball Club, and we have nowhere to play. We just keep putting one foot in front of the other and doing the next right thing. I am a, I am proud of my hometown. I want, uh, designated courts like the ones I've played in and other parts of the country. I wanna be alive to enjoy pickleball courts here in Vacaville. I want six courts or more to host tournaments and, and encourage young people with places to play. The top U.S. Pickleball National Champion is a sixteen-year-old female. It's not just a sport for retired tennis players or fifty-plus seniors. Since September last year, we have gone to the Parks and Recs Commission's meetings and made our presence known. We have made our wants known. The commissioners have heard us and encouraged us along the way, and now we need to make our presence known to you. We need our own courts with room to grow. According to the U.S. Pickleball Association, pickleball has grown a hundred and fifty-eight point six percent in the last three years, eighty percent in the last year alone. So I have said, build it and they will come. Help us by doing the next right thing and help us help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Goodwin. My wife and I, um, well, our family has been a part of Vacaville for over a hundred and thirty years. My daughters are like fifth-generation Vacaville people. We've been here for a long time. But I also wanted to talk about pickleball. I, first of all, we are having, thank you for letting us set up our demo court out there, and I hope you got the chance to view it. And I wanted to invite you to come out and play. May twentieth, not this Saturday, but a week from Saturday, North Orchard Park, we're gonna have our first annual, annual pickleball social. It'll be from nine AM to noon. We're gonna have food. We're gonna have nets set up. We're gonna chalk out our own lines. We'll be all ready for you. We'll have extra paddles. All you have to do is come out, bring your kids, bring yourselves, bring some tennis shoes, um, and we'll teach you how to play pickleball, and I guarantee you'll enjoy it. You might be out there every weekend after that. Pickleball is a very social sport. We've, as a group, we connect versus, via social media. We figure out where everybody's playing. We pick our couple's usual spots, and we go up there. We set up at least four nets, and we play, I don't know, five times a week. And we play as a group. We don't just go out there as a twosome and, and just play. We play four people. It takes about fifteen minutes for a game. We switch partners. We, you know, mix and mingle. It's, it's, it's awesome, social community type event. It's awesome. I bring that up because we have, I know the city, even though we don't have dedicated courts yet, I know the city has in place, I, or agreements to create a couple courts, permanent courts here and there. And what I wanna say is that's kind of not the solution we're looking for. We're looking for a regional facility that has at least six courts. Six courts right now is what we would need right now, and, and we, that's almost starting from scratch because we use up that many. And it's not just tournaments we're talking about. We use those when we go, we use at least four when we go out and play every time. So six courts is what it would take, and you can fit, you saw the pickleball court out there. You can fit space of two tennis courts. You can easily fit six pickleball courts. So it doesn't take a lot of space. And, um, anyways, we would appreciate, appreciate the support. I don't think, I've attended a lot of the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, Commission meetings. I don't know of the plan yet for a regional-type pickleball facility. I, I hear a lot of Turk talk. I know it's not happening at Centennial Park, but I don't know what the plan is. And I hope, I hope the city gets a plan soon, because at the commission meeting, they were talking about Centennial Park taking not just ten years, but I heard forty years for the all five phases of the Centennial Park to be built. So I know it takes a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ball as well, you can probably tell by the hat. My name is Brian Peity. I'm a previous business owner here in Vacaville, employed quite a few people. I stumbled upon this group last Thursday, bought a racket Wednesday night, played my first pickleball last Thursday. I played again this morning because they meet on two, one, one of the times they meet is Tuesdays and Thursday mornings from nine to eleven. Great group of people. I mean, just vibrant, fun group. And I heard today that they were coming tonight. I'm not part of the, I'm learning about it, but I just learned today that they were coming tonight, and I just wanted to come and support them, um, and put my two cents worth in on this. I saw that you had a proclamation about older Americans. You know, I know that you and the Parks and Recreation Department don't just, uh, talk the talk by giving out proclamations. You actually do things. And so does the Parks and Rec. But this is an opportunity to actually do something, not just say it, but to actually do it. Help these people. Pickleball, they, as they said, grew a hundred and fifty-eight percent. It is the fastest-growing sport in the United States of America. There is no sport that is growing faster. None. You might have seen, uh, they, somebody mentioned about the, uh, the, uh, lady racquetball champion is sixteen. You might have seen her on TV on Sunday on ESPN. They played it twice. They showed, ESPN was showing the two tournaments that she won. So what I'm getting at is, we need your help. I, I heard today for the first time that come summertime, once the kids are out of school and, and, and the Parks and Recs start using the courts for tennis, that we may not have anywhere to play consistently, knowing, okay, we can meet at this time at this place. That may not be even available to us come June, July, let alone this long-term needing courts to actually do things. So that's it. That's quick to it, try to get to the point, but we need your help. We need Parks and Recs help. And, uh, anything you could do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
New in town, my family and I moved here last summer. My husband works at Travis Air Force Base. And, um, I, last time we were, came to a meeting, I brought my whole crew, but everyone couldn't make it tonight. I've got four boys. And, um, we have lived all over the place, as you can imagine, and, um, we were super excited to move here. We've heard the weather's great, and it's so far been an awesome place to live, but we really severely miss pickleball. And these guys love playing with my, um, ten-year-old. He actually whoops me. He's definitely an intermediate player. And he learned when we lived in Florida by the elderly people that we lived in, kind of a, um, an area with a lot of retired retirees, and, um, they were so excited to teach him, and, you know, lots of the kids in the neighborhood would come and play. And I have just loved seeing how it crosses generations. So it seems silly to be like, really emphasizing this like pickleball when there's like really major issues on the agenda, right? But, um, I actually heard what you were saying, even though I was outside, I heard about, um, the mental health comments and issues that were brought up, and that is really close to my heart and my family. We deal with that as well. During when, and you can even Google this, like pickleball and mental health. And there's been, Psychology Today said it's like the number one in two thousand twenty-one. So like the number one help during COVID, um, to combat mental health issues. Just getting outside, and like they said, it's, it's so social, it's easy to pick up. That's why people love it. It's not like tennis is great, but you really have to train. You have to really learn and practice. So anyway, and I know that there's a, I'm just representing also the military, um, population here, that there's a lot of transplants that I know who have moved here, and they feel the same way we do. We're like, there's no dedicated pickleball. We're like, there's no dedicated pickleball courts, like what? And so they just stop playing. And so I'm just determined to try, even though I may just be here short-term. I know there's, the military base isn't going away. And there's a lot of military families who also are hoping to be able to continue those traditions in their families. And I just wanted to add that specifically having several courts so that like beginners, like my kids who want to come play, you know, some of these guys are really good and they only have so much time to play. And I would, they're so kind and they're always welcoming if I bring the kids. But it would be nice to have enough courts that we can bring them and not like be impeding on anyone's more serious game, if that makes sense. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Business from the floor. And with that, we're going to move on to item eight, public hearings. I see none. Now we're going to move on to item nine. We're going to go to 9C. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is really just an update on Measure M. This is the time of year where we begin our budget process. And typically, we orient the council by starting off with an update on Measure M. And given that we have two new council members on the dais this, this year, we felt it was appropriate to walk you through some of the details of Measure M, what it is, what it is not, how it's been used thus far, and what are some of the commitments. Now, please keep in mind that as our team walks you through that tonight, it's really just meant to be a quick introduction to it. We are fully prepared to make a more in-depth presentation this Friday when we start talking about goals and priorities in terms of how to use those funds going forward. So with that, I will turn it over to our team, led by Ken Metzmeier, our Finance Director, and Rika Gidry, our Program Manager from the City Manager's Office.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the Council. As the City Manager mentioned, this is really an update of the Measure M sales tax in advance of the planning session and the budget study sessions that we have coming up. And so what's on the agenda this evening? First, we'll be going over a Measure M recap. So what is Measure M? An update on the numbers, how is Measure M allocated? And I'll be passing on to our Program Manager, Rika Gidry, to go over the program updates and the status of those. So what is Measure M? So Measure M is an add-on sales tax that was originally approved by voters in November of 2012, and then approved for an extension in November of 2016 for 20 years. And at the time when it was approved, it was approved at a three-quarters of a cent sales tax. And Measure M is sometimes mistaken as a bond or a special sales tax, but it is a general sales tax that can be used for general municipal purposes. It's stated in the ballot measure that you see on the slide. This slide right here shows where we're projecting Measure M to end for the current fiscal year, so as of June of 2023. So for the current fiscal year, we're projecting revenues to be around 23.1 million. Expenses to come in at 14.1 million, and that fund balance at the end of the year to be around 55 million. That fund balance, we do separate into two buckets. And so that very first bucket is commitment. So of that 55.3 million, a little under 24 million of that is tied up on items that have councils previously approved for CIP projects that they've been budgeted and approved, but they're just not going to be fully spent by the end of this fiscal year. So those commitments would carry on to the new fiscal year. The uncommitted balance, which is that 31.4 million, is, as its name states, is really the uncommitted amount that isn't tied to any projects or anything at all. And kind of bringing this back to, and relating it to the budget updates that we bring to council quarterly, when we talk about having a total general fund reserve of 50-plus million and a 40% reserve, this 31 million is part of that. In fact, it's more than half of that amount. So the general fund reserve isn't separate from this amount. This uncommitted balance is part of that general fund reserve that we talk about when we do those budget updates. So how is Measure M spent? I'll walk through this chart. So on the left-hand side right here is, the green column is our projected revenues for the year, so the 23 million. And then on the right side, you have our projected expenses. And so I know there's a lot of colors to this. We'll go over the different categories further in the presentation. But just at a high level, Measure M is spent on ongoing programs, which is the section in green. So those are going to be things such as our street maintenance, park beautification. These are programs that are funded through Measure M on an annual basis. And then it also funds staffing, which is the section below. It funds pilot programs. So these are things such as our EDI or DEI initiatives, the Neighborhood Cleanup Programs, the Council District Programs, the Apprentice Program. Those are considered pilot programs. The one-time projects are going to be things that are more like specific capital improvement projects that are related to park improvements or facility improvements. It funds our PERS additional discretionary payments. So this was a new item that was proposed as going into this 23-year budget. And this is really making an additional contribution to our PERS unfunded liability to save on long-term interest costs. And so when you take those items of what we're spending with the Measure M dollars, that's that 14.1 million. We are projecting Measure M to have a surplus of 9 million, if you kind of look at Measure M on its own. But it is important to remember that Measure M is part of the general fund, and that's kind of what these last two bullet points are related to. And so although we're projecting a surplus on the Measure M side of about 9 million when we end this fiscal year, it's the opposite with the rest of the general fund. So on the rest, with the rest of the general fund, we are projecting expenses to actually exceed revenues. And so when you look at the total general fund as a whole, while we project a surplus of about 1 to 2 million, it really is because of the surplus or the fact that the Measure M revenues are higher than expenses. That's really carrying the general fund as a whole. And that, kind of that deficit, if you will, on the non-Measure M side is indicated by this kind of crosshatch pattern, this section of the column right here. So our staffing goes, I will not go through each one of these, but Measure M does fund 29 positions citywide. And so just to highlight several of them, one of the positions would be the Program Manager position, which is Rika's position seated to the left of me. Our Economic Development Director is also funded through Measure M. On the Public Safety side, we have six firefighter paramedics, eight officers, a police captain, three POW coordinator positions that are also funded through Measure M. And then with Parks and Rec and Public Works, you also see that there are positions related to a planner. And on the Public Works side, maintenance worker positions, two of them that are also funded through Measure M. So in total, there's 29 positions that are funded through Measure M. The following slide is a breakdown of the different Measure M programs. And so for ongoing programs for the current year, we had budgeted 5.1 million. And so as I stated, these are annual amounts. And so this, these are amounts that were budgeted 22, 23. They would also get budgeted in 24 years going forward. So these are things like our park beautification programs, street maintenance, funding for vehicle and equipment replacement, homeless remediation, funding for our Family Resource Center and POW programs, and our biotech strategy. The pilot programs are, as I mentioned earlier, the pilot program, the five-year pilot programs that were started in fiscal year 2022. So these are like the Council District Benefit Programs, the DEI program, youth scholarships, neighborhood cleanup. And then more recently, in this current fiscal year, is that Fire Apprentice Program that started up. One-time projects are going to be, again, more specific to park improvements, facility improvements. These are items that are not like an annual-funded item, but more so specific to a particular project. PERS ADP payment I had mentioned earlier, ongoing staffing at 6.3 million. If you were kind of to compare the slides, you'll notice that this slide shows 17.5 million for the expenses, whereas what I'd showed earlier was 14 million. The difference being that although we budget for 17.5 million in the year, we don't spend that entire amount because you could have things such as vacancies that come up. There could be projects that don't get completed in the year. And so they end up carrying forward and end up showing up as a commitment because the money hasn't left the door as of June. So that's the difference there. For project funding set aside, I had mentioned earlier that in our fund balance, there was about a $23.9 million commitment. And so that too can be broken down into separate, two different categories. And so about 15.1 million of that 23.9 million is related to active projects. So these are projects that have been budgeted for, approved by council within the past two years that when we get to June, they aren't going to be completed yet. And so those budget amounts will carry forward into the upcoming year. These are projects that are being actively worked on. The potential projects, which are highlighted, 8.7 million. These are items that when Measure M was originally extended back in 2018, there was some initial funding that was put aside for these. These projects aren't actively being worked on. They were kind of, I think, ideas or initiatives that were put in place at the time, but warranted further discussion. Reason why they're highlighted is kind of previewing or kind of leading up to the strategic planning session that we have on Friday, and also the budget study sessions that we have coming up. These are areas where we definitely would like council feedback at that time on, if these items are priorities, then we're going to need to fund them more than what's currently set there. If they aren't as big of priorities as some of the other stuff that comes up, these are areas where you could potentially defund these projects and then move the funding to another area. So this is, that's why it's highlighted, is this is something that we would need to discuss further as far as what's council's priority of them. For the fire, five-year pilot programs that were approved in fiscal year '22, not asking for any approval this evening, but bringing this up as a discussion topic, kind of leading up to budget again. For the five-year pilot programs, we're in year two, about to complete year two of the pilot programs. And kind of in that time, we've been able to see from a funding standpoint, where areas where we maybe need additional funding or less funding, and also just from an efficiency standpoint, whether it makes sense to keep this particular pilot program going or maybe change it in some manner. And so the very first item where we're proposing a change for consideration is in the adaptive sensory equipment area, where we're proposing reducing this by 50,000. This is not to get rid of this particular, the funding. That really, the idea here is that with the adaptive sensory equipment, it makes more sense to fund that when you have an individual park project come up. And if sensory adaptive equipment is to be part of that project, it makes more sense to include that as part of the budget for that project as opposed to having kind of the set aside of $50,000 each year. It's a general amount that isn't really committed to any project rather than funded in that manner. It makes more sense to, as a project comes up, if adaptive sensory equipment should be part of that project, that you increase the budget to capture that. The second proposed change here is with the youth scholarship program. There is $100,000 that's allocated to that annually. Last year, we came back to council prior to the end of the fiscal year to ask for additional funding to fund individuals or applicants that were on the waiting list. And then when we have our budget update in a couple of weeks, we'll be doing the same. And so just the fact that we've gone through this two years now, there's going to be two, each year we were going to have to come back for additional funding for this program. One of the things that we're proposing for consideration with the upcoming budget for fiscal year '24 is actually bumping up the youth scholarship to 150,000. With that, I'll pass it on to Rika.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. So the city is continuing work with Nicole Anderson and Associates for the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program. To date, 26 sessions have been completed, three with department heads, five with public safety and the overall city staff, 18. We do anticipate training sessions with the community later this summer or fall. So as Ken mentioned earlier, regardless of how the money is allocated, three parks have been identified to receive adaptive sensory equipment. Meadowlands Park in District 2, it is out to bid this month, and play equipment includes adaptive swing. Sierra Vista in District 4, currently in construction, in the construction document phase, out to bid in 2024. And the Fairmount Bealad Park, again in District 4, adaptive play equipment has been purchased and it's out to bid in the fall. Next slide, please. The property abatement program is underway. Services include trimming trees, weed abatement in front and rear yards, as well as graffiti removal on private property. It also offers assistance with towing or removing any inoperable vehicles. Next slide. Neighborhood cleanup program. This program started back in October 2021. The city held a total of four events to date. Very, very popular program. The most recent is in District, was in District 5 back in September on La Cruz Lane. We had 64 volunteers, 20 fence boards were replaced, as well as 24 tons of waste removed. Just last month, we had another cleanup, we had another cleanup on Needham Drive on April 15th. We had 61 volunteers, removed 30 tons of waste, and we also replaced about 455 fence boards. And as a recap for the youth scholarship program, $100,000 was approved by City Council. $1,000 credit was given to each eligible family within, with children 17 years old and under for Vacaville Recreation Activities and Programs. Now, there are over 550 activities that are offered. And some listed here include before and after-school care, sports leagues and classes, music, art, and science camps, swim lessons, as well as karate and self-defense classes. Now, overall, funds have been allocated to 116 families. However, as Ken mentioned earlier, it is under budget. So 60 families are currently on the waitlist, and staff will be requesting an additional 50,000 on May 23rd. Grant matching program, the Fire Department received a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award back in July 2022 to send firefighters to paramedics training related to code compliance. Match funds awarded was $49,170.55, and that was a 10% match. Council District Benefit Program. So a brief background, each district and one outlarge mayor receives $50,000 annually to use for a project or service that benefits the community. The Council District Benefit Program is designed to provide opportunities to improve and beautify neighborhood public spaces, provide positive long-term impacts to the community, nurture a sense of community pride, and improve community resiliency. As most of you all know, you've been very, very busy. I just highlighted a few things that we've been working on for the past two years through this program. Soccer goals were installed in Ridgeview in Cordero Sparks in District 1, which I hear has been heavily used by the residents. Water-efficient landscaping, where residents can take advantage of up to $2 per square feet if they replace their turf to water-efficient landscaping. Hometown Hero Program, Tree Rebate Program, debris bin events. District 6 did hold their second annual spruce-up day just last Saturday. Swim days, movie nights, snow days, monthly listening sessions are under, are still continuing throughout the year, and donations to Vacaville nonprofits. The Vacaville Fire Apprentice Program was aimed at increasing diversity in the number of candidates for the Vacaville Fire Department. 337 applications were received. And last month, on April 27th, a badge-pinning ceremony was held where 10 firefighter apprentices were sworn in. That concludes my presentation. I'll pass it back.
Thanks, Rika. So the following slide is really just a roadmap for, we are jumping into the budget very quickly. And so the next session that we're going to have that ties into the budget is going to be this Friday on May 12th, where we have our Strategic Plan Priorities and Visioning Session. On May 23rd, we have our first of two budget study sessions, which one we'll be going over kind of the budget process, budget augmentations. Budget Study Session Number Two is when we have our department presentations that are as part of that budget study session. And then finally, on June 27th, is the budget adoption. That concludes the presentation. Be happy to take questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any member of the council have any questions? Councilmember Sill.
Question was on scholarship funds. So we have, I apologize, I forget the difference in applicants. So two questions on that. Are there ever any unused funds that have been reserved for families to qualify? And I'm assuming those unused funds would roll over, so I just want to confirm that. And then number two, I'm just curious, is there a reason why we're not suggesting just increasing the, I think it would be 16,000 more to cover 100% of the waitlist?
Sure. I see Reggie, our Director of Parks and Rec, coming down to address that.
Go on down.
Good evening, Council, Vice Mayor, Mayor. The unused funds do go back into the pot and get reallocated. And what was your second question?
So then if we have 26, yeah, if we have 26 additional families that still wouldn't be allocated, is there a reason why we're not asking for another 26,000?
Well, we're going to be asked for 50,000.
But, okay, hold on, let me see if my math is right here. The 150,000 covers 150 families, right?
That's not, well, no. Some families get $1,000, larger families get 2,000.
So here's my question then. Let me rephrase it.
Okay.
Does that amount cover all the families that are on the waitlist?
150,000 would cover all the families on the waitlist.
All right, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions here, I'm going to open it up to the public wishing to comment on this item. Seeing nobody from the public, we'll close public comment. Does anyone up here have any other comments? Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It's good to see where all this Measure M money is going. One of the things that I thought was really impressive is I know that there was a pretty engaged discussion when we talked about the Fire Apprentice Program. And I just wanted to say just wanted to say how pleased I am to see that 337 people put in for that program. I think that speaks volumes about providing opportunity. And if there are ways that we may be able to grow that program so that more of those people can get involved, I think that's just absolutely wonderful that that many people are interested in. Great presentation. Thanks for kind of spelling it all out, but that really stood out to me. I think that in the, if we talk to Jessica or some of the hiring folks, if we could get 337 applications for some of these other positions, that would be like outstanding. So really speaks volumes to the culture chief that you're building within the Fire Department and that that many people want to be involved. So.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Promise. Question. You have a triathlon coming up for the youth pretty soon, where they're going to be swimming, running, and biking. Question. Do you provide the bikes to the youth that do not have bikes in order for them to participate in that? And I know this is the first one, it's your inaugural event or year, but are you going to be able to assist young people who do not have bikes?
This being our first year, we will not be able to provide that service. They will have to bring their own bikes.
I could get bikes.
What's the amount?
CMF has a bike repair program.
We can connect, yeah. If, yeah, we can find out if those that are interested in participating need bikes, and we can work with.
You may have to put the word out there because they may not even think that it's possible if they're, you know, if they don't already have the equipment. So somehow try to communicate with those families. I would hate for any young person to miss out. And you're covering, what, seven to 17-year-olds?
Correct. Yes, we can put something out, and we'll make sure we connect with those individuals if they, if they need that assistance.
I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the.
And we should, we could also expand some of our conversations on Friday, but as far as, these are great pilot programs, and that's just what it does. It allows us opportunities to see how we can improve them. But sometimes it takes money, sometimes it takes coordination. So appreciate that. Yeah, good question. Vice Mayor Wiley.
I don't remember which slide it was, but you had a slide that talked about committed programs and money set aside for committed programs, and that we will be discussing those later on. So just based on how all the prices escalate so quickly, there's really no way that that amount would be anywhere close to doing most of those things. Is that correct?
Yeah, if we're referring to the 8.7 million, that's correct. And this is amounts that were set aside maybe two to three years ago, really at the start of it. And so I think they were probably set aside initially for some studies, but they were never, I believe, intended to actually fund the entire.
Those are just potential programs that would get further discussion if we were committing that money.
Correct. If you were going to go forward with any of these items, it would require additional funding. These were just monies that were set aside, I believe, the very first year to be discussed further.
So what about the 15 million for the active projects? Is that anywhere close to funding any of those, or?
That should be, it should be. I mean, that, those are going to be, the active projects are going to be the items that we, that are actively being worked on. And so if, for whatever reason, you know, it wasn't sufficient, those are going to be items that would come forward when we're doing like the fiscal year 23 CIP budget update, or CIP budget augmentation for this upcoming year. So those amounts should be close to what's needed. And if not, then those are the items that would come back to council in order to, to update council on what is needed.
Then, maybe I missed this, but maybe it wasn't there. Can you tell me, what was our Measure M revenue for this year compared to Measure M revenue for last year? Just the revenue piece of it?
Sure. So Measure M has been kind of tracking over the last couple of years, so where it has been above $20 million. And so it is 23.1 this year. Part of that amount is, I believe council may recall that with Measure M, we did some interfund loans to our utilities department, so they can buy some vehicles rather than go out and get external financing. So there's about $200,000 in loan payments that's part of that. That's different this year than last year, but.
Loan payment back to us? So this includes two extra thousand or?
$200,000, yes.
Extra for that, okay.
Correct. So it was, it's 23 this year, and I want to say last year, it was above 20 million, probably 21, 22, thereabouts, but not too significantly different.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a comment?
Just real quick, I want to clarify something, Ken. If you can go back to the one slide on the, on the projected, the commitments, I'm sorry. There we go, the active projects. If I'm not mistaken, you shared with me that that figure, 15.1, does actually include the additional funding request that's on the agenda tonight as well?
That is correct, yes. The next item is included in this active project amount.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide where you identify all the districts and the projects, projects that they have going on? On that slide, I just want to let it be known that District Four is not noted on there, and there's a reason for it. I represent District Four, and I will be meeting with Reese. We have a meeting tomorrow, and you'll be seeing more, you will see, be seeing something to come from District Four as to what we'll be doing. But I just want the public to know, it's not that I'm not doing anything, but they just now are getting a representative for District Four.
Mr. City Manager.
But you're actually being modest, if I can embellish on that, is that your predecessor from District Four spent all your allocated money for the past budget year. So being newly elected, your, your funds will come as part of the next budget, and we fully anticipate that you'll have all kinds of projects for us to, to invest into your districts.
I like your explanation better than mine. Thank you.
And I would say I'm in the same situation as you. Former mayor roulette earmarked funding to go to Play for Old Park. So although that's not, a lot of good opportunity from the council to look into the district. That was part of the program, and it does have a public benefit. And there are rules, we've all sat down, I know I've sat down with you, so I understand what you can and cannot use it for. But in general, I appreciate the program and how it's being used. Councilmember Stockton.
Yeah, sorry, just one more thing. I just wanted to thank Rika and George Anne Baker Smith for their work with the district benefit program. I'm very excited about the soccer goals. I see kids every day when they get off of school playing at Cordero's Park and Ridgeview Park, playing soccer out there. I know I'm going to try to expand that if I can, but I would like to also know how much pickleball courts cost. So if I can make some happy people, I can try to do that. So if you, maybe Reggie or somebody, let me know what those things cost, and whether that's even doable or not. And then the ALPR cameras, I wanted to thank the Police Department for those, for helping secure some of our neighborhoods over in District One, and, and providing them with resources and intel that's helping them prevent and solve crimes as they happen to happen. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for your presentation. It's been very useful, and so there was no action item on that tonight. So I don't, questions? With that, we will move on to, Manager, what are we going to move on to?
Go back to 9A.
9A. All right, we're going to go back to 9A. C is done. 9A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. 9A is a couple of resolutions related to spending more Measure M money. And this is related to ball field lighting in both Centennial and Arlington Parks. Brian McClain, our Public Works Director, is here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. A quick background on this project. This is the Centennial and Arlington Parks Ball Field Lighting Project. Both parks were constructed in approximately 1993 and 94. The ball field lights for the full-size fields were not installed during the initial construction of those projects. The American Little League and National Little League have expressed a sincere need for additional lighting at these full-size fields to extend practice and gameplay times. And in fiscal year 2122, during that budget cycle, the City Council approved $840,000 in Measure M funding for the ball field light project. These are the two sites. I'll go through Centennial first. This is the Centennial Park site. You can see the Google Earth on the right. And on the left, the marked out locations where the poles for the light, light poles would be installed at Centennial Park. And here is Arlington Park. And again, on the left, the denotations of the small red triangles or stars denoting the location of the poles for installation. The scope of the work is fairly heavy on the procurement side. Galvanized steel poles, LED light fixtures, concrete foundations and structural supports, electrical equipment, including transformers and static arrays, as well as conduit and electrical other equipment to power up the particular lights. Installation, commissioning, and training, of course, for our maintenance staff. During the original project design phase, which included planning and preliminary project design, preliminary structural engineering, electrical engineering, and environmental, we determined that the $840,000 was simply insufficient for the scope of work of those two particular ball fields. An additional $800,000 would be required to move this project into the construction phase. And you might ask how we came up with $800,000. It's based on the city utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement process, which saves the city money through a state law-based procurement process. We've used a similar type of process as these, this particular cooperative purchasing agreement. Last year, council approved the purchase of the city's electric buses, and we purchased those off of a cooperative purchasing agreement. It allows for the speedy procurement of, of the, the particular job itself, provides significant cost savings, because it's not just the city of Vacaville going out and doing an RFP procurement. These procurements are done statewide, and so you have a lot more of that economy of scale savings. And of course, it complies with the city's purchasing ordinances. The specific contract is with Musco Lighting LLC. This is a system that we have used in, at Nelson Park, as well as Keating Park. The Musco lights themselves are, are designed so that they prevent the spillage of light into residential areas. So it really focuses that, that light on the, the ball fields. Comes with an outstanding 25-year warranty, including labor and materials. And if council considers this project worthy and moves it forward, we would be looking at construction to commence in July with a completion date of the end of September of 2023. As far as the environmental, both project sites are within the scope of their previously approved EIRs, and no further environmental review is required. The fiscal impact, of course, is an augmentation request of $800,000 in Measure M funding. And the strategic goal is Goal Three, protect Vacaville's quality of life. The recommendation, by simple motion, adopt subject resolutions, and there are two. Resolution of the City Council, the city of Vacaville approving the allocation of additional $800,000 in Measure M funding for the Centennial, Centennial and Arlington Park Ball Field Light Installation Project, and a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Musco Lighting LLC in the amount of $1,268,348 through the Sourcewell Contract Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Seeing no questions. Okay, Council, Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thank you. On the presentation, you said you could anticipate starting if we approved this at July of 2023. Will those pieces and parts be available? Are they in stock? Or are they, you know, out, out of stock currently?
That's a great question. So we've had many phone calls with the contractor, right down to the contractors, subcontractors, to ensure that the equipment is available. And we have been told multiple times in many different ways that the, the supplies are available. And that's why we're, the department is bringing this forward now. With, with, again, your consideration of the project and that $800,000 augmentation, we are certain that we can get this project done this summer.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Can you just briefly explain, you know, how we went from the previous estimate of what this was going to cost to it being twice as much? And were we in contract with them before, or was that just an older estimate?
That's a great question. So looking back at the record, that resulted on the $840,000, it looks like there was a lot of outreach that came to council from the, the various little leagues. And there was an urgency from what we've been able to gather, looking at the records, to move the project forward and get it into the CIP process. And it came late into the CIP, and with that urgency, also came a number that was woefully inadequate. And I will tell you that in our investigation and looking at the Sourcewell procurement process, we also were investigating other options, how to keep this project as streamlined and as cost-effective as possible. In that process, in that research, we discovered that multiple cities that are installing a similar type of scope of work as the project we have here are all landing around the $2 million mark. So I felt confident, very confident, as well as my team, that the, the 1.6 million, which is, it is double the, the original cost essentially, is in line with market costs for a project of this particular scope.
My next question is, is there a way to offset some of the electrical costs related to these, and also create shade structures with solar, you know, shade structures or something like that in the, in these parks? Because I know Centennial needs some shade.
That's something we could certainly look into.
Councilmember Sill. You're good. I would say the only, it's not really a question, but I'll phrase it in the form of a question. Are you aware of any other projects now that you've uncovered a, a woefully underrepresented number? There's a lot of potential projects, whether it's through CIP or Measure M desire, to say, let's go back and look at these other items and maybe update those numbers?
That's a great question, Mayor. And it is something actually, I guess about four weeks ago, six weeks ago, that we started really taking seriously and, and going through those numbers. And so we have been going through each of the CIP projects. Each of the engineers with those projects have been diving down into those particular numbers and calling contractors and other cities to evaluate what their cost as well. We are seeing in general a, a cost increase across the board. And so I've been working with the Director of Finance and the city manager to ensure that those particular costs are coming forward, and we're able to work through some of the cost savings that, if there's anything, to be able to cut out of the project or slim it down in a particular way. We're working on those, those avenues. As the Director of Finance, as Ken mentioned earlier, if we define a project that in particular is, is going to need additional funding, we would, of course, bring that back to the City Council for review, and it would end up going through the CIP augmentation process, the CIP amendment process that council ultimately approves or, or does not as well.
Their city manager?
I would just add that we are prepared to give the council an update on those park projects, and some of the costs, potential cost increases, as we continue to work through those park design projects this Friday as part of your study session.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to open up to the public for, for comment on this. Not necessary. Just come forward and, and share. That's.
I'm curious.
Yes.
Break it down. The residents of neighborhood around Arlington Park or Centennial, or me, or all of us? What is there about? 50 of us in here today? Why don't you guys, you know, do it right, and let the people vote on it if they want projects like this to exist? When I started playing Little League in 1959, we didn't have one light on the field, one blade of grass, and they produced all kinds of stars that went on to the majors, West Lalee Little League Park. Now, you guys got this, something going on here in Vacaville. You got to have just the right blade of grass, right soil, and now you want to put light poles that support radio frequency antennas all around our kids and our schools. And I just want to know, you seven people, or what? Maybe the city manager is going to help decide this issue and say, yeah, let's do it. And then boom, let's spend $2 million. There, there really hadn't been that much looking into what he's proposing here. And no offense to this guy, I'm sure he knows what he's doing. And no offense to this guy, I'm sure he knows what he's doing. But trust me, these are our little kids. Both of my sons and my grandson played at Arlington for years. And that's, that equipment that he got there now is fine. It'll last another 20 years. Guys can keep spending my tax dollars if you want, but I at least want to object. And there's a, a minute and 20 seconds back.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
That man's concerned. I'm a resident Roberto Valdez, I've been here a long time. And I wasn't planning on making it come, but I, I'm curious, okay, at this point. I'm not an engineer, you know. I do have an education and a degree, but that's not in that field of engineering or whatever. But I would be very curious to find out, what is the impact of all that lighting system? Is it on all the time? Does it turn off at certain times? You know, we're not out of the woods as far as energy saving. And I'm assuming that's pretty recent technology. So is there something else you could add to that? And I would say I've also been a Little League player, not in this state, but in another state. And we did with less, way less. But again, it's important that we reach out to all the community, not just a certain party. And I think you all share that concern. At least that's what I heard last night from your equity goals, you know.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'm going to bring this back to the council for discussion. I would like you, if you could, you know, answer the question on the impact of lighting.
That's a great question. So we have engineers that have been provided, you know, providing light studies, lighting studies. So the Musco representatives that we've been able to contact through the Sourcewell procurement process, they actually analyzed and did the, the photometrics of the lights in their particular spacing, at particular heights in the field. And the, the lights, the specifications of these lights, as I mentioned earlier, really works to retain the lighting within the, the field itself so that you have that as less spillage of light as possible into areas beyond the, the field limits. In terms of energy savings, these are LED light fixtures. These are a much, you know, more efficient system than they have been in the last, you know, 30 years. And we had some old lights, you know, at, at Nelson and Keating that were recently upgraded. And they've been phenomenal in terms of being able to provide a, a better quality of light at a lower cost. And we're also using the same kind of technology in our streetlights as we did downtown earlier last year, upgrading those lights. So it provides a, a better clarity of light at a lower cost.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you. Just to clarify, all of this will be from Measure M funds funded wise?
Correct.
There's, these are my comments on this particular item. I think number one, wouldn't be, wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't relay some frustration on the delay of the implement of this actual project. Part of it feels, or from certain members in the community feels that, you know, I think it was, when was the originally approved or funded originally approved? I think it was, was it '21?
'21, yes.
Yeah. And so, so at that point, there was, there was funding allocated. And then, you know, here, here we are, and I understand that was right in the middle of COVID. Things were shut down, our supply chain was impacted. Who knows how things are going? But then on, on one side, it's frustrating because like the goal, I think for a lot of us, for many of us, is how do we get the most out of our dollar? And the longer we wait, the value of that dollar decreases, particularly right now with inflation. And so here we are. I think the, both the comments from the public, I absolutely empathize with. What I see, what I've experienced from a teenager here, growing up in the 90s in Markham, right next to these ball fields, many of us didn't even have access to those ball fields. I was fortunate enough to have, for a period of time, the ability for my, my mom to sign me up for sports. And that helped keep me out of trouble. A lot of other kids I grew up with, they couldn't. To me, the ability to have a lighted field is, is the ability for us to access, our kids to access these particular parks, these particular fields even later. Currently what's happening, because there's, we have an increase in population, because we have a higher demand in sports, because we have a higher commitment to make sure that our kids stay. Challenges that folks face is you got to get off of, if you have a job that allows you to get off at 4:00, 4:30 to get your kid to practice at, or a game at 4:30, 5 o'clock, that in itself is a challenge. Our school system now, state of California's pushed back start times about an average of a half hour later. So that's really compressed the ability for kids K through 12 to be able to fit more time into that, to the regular daylight. So there's no daylight savings there. And so the most they can get out of games, maybe they can get, so the reason why they, they push the start time earlier is that way is because they don't have 100% lighter field. So that, those are two fields that based on a couple of years of, few years now, at least few years of research has shown that those, that's the demand, that's what the community, many of the community, baseball community's been, been requesting, which is a large part of our population. And so for me, when we take Measure M funds, which is a sales tax, a sales tax that's, that's put into that funds, one, one of the requests is how do we take those funds and actually reinvest it back into the infrastructure? And how do we do something to where it actually is a long-term community benefit? The way I see this, it's at least a 20-year community benefit that allows people, kids, adults, to be able to access this particular space throughout the year, minus rainy days. And to me, that, that is absolute needed, absolute need. Just one more comment I, I just want to put out there. One of the challenges that a lot of sport, youth sports are having is getting more parent volunteers to actually coach. Part of that, there's different reasons, but one of the key reasons is availability. So again, for, for someone who has to, you know, depending on their work schedule, if they have, if they have to have practice start at 5 o'clock, they can't, they can't get off of work early in order to be able to coach and, you know, be there to be dependent on, the kids are dependent on them to be able to get to the ball, the ball fields. And so having lights allows it to extend later in the day and increases the access. I've shared in the past, my experience living in LA, they don't have many parks there, if at all. Usually you have one or two concrete city, full of concrete cities with one community park everybody converges on. The school sites are typically the source for that public recreation. The school sites themselves shut the lights off around 7:00 or 8:00. But even there, the, all the kids, they'll turn on their lights off their phone and still play ball, whatever. Just because that's the only place that they have to go. And I think part of the quality of life and the balance that we, we try to struggle to, to balance here in Vacaville is how do we act, how, how do we, how do we make sure we don't impose anything negative on others? How do we fiscally responsible? I think, you know, I, I can't speak for the council, but I think when, I would hope that when we allocate funds that there's a quicker turnaround on that to make sure that, that we get the most out of that dollar that we allocate. And that also we continue to at least show the, the folks that their tax dollars is going to something tangible that, that they're requesting, that they're benefiting from. Maybe not everybody feels that way, but we wouldn't be elected in these roles to represent folks otherwise. So I'm going to support the, this initiative, this item.
Yes, thank you for your comments. I think perhaps one of the largest complaints that I hear or conversations that I have related to Measure M funds is that a majority of it has been spent on supplementing staffing, which is what it was meant to do. But one of the things that was absolutely essential to passing Measure M was that this money went toward putting amenities into our community. We've talked about trails, we've talked about adding on to our parks. These are not for replacing existing lights. This is to add to supplemental lit fields to our community so that parents can get off work and go see their kids play and participate in some of these activities. I, I think it's wonderful. I've had a million kids that play soccer or play Little League on, in these locations because I know that these fields can be utilized for not, not just baseball because of the large field, grass field in the back. But I, I, in addition to that, we've also made a commitment to these kids that utilize these fields in our community. And, you know, as much as we tried with the best of intentions to plan to do these things, we're limited on resources, staff time and the availability of the contractors that we, that we hire to build and, and make these projects happen. So I understand that this happened amidst COVID. I, I understand that everything is costing more, it's harder to get and takes more time. I believe that if we can get this done, we can fulfill a commitment not only to these kids, but to the rest of our community. If these Measure M funds, a portion of them is going to go toward improving quality of life amenities for, for the people who live here. So I too am going to support.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you so much. I, I'll use the words from Councilman Silva in Stockton because I can't talk that much. My voice hurts. It's, you know, essentially me and Silva had a conversation and it really segued right into my comment about, one of the issues, sorry, it's better now. One of the issues that really is kind of the elephant in the room is there's been a huge shift in America since 1960 till now. It's not an opinion, it's a fact. We've gone from a single house, single income household to a dual-headed household. Housing formation and the ability and the requirement, as we've seen in the cost of living index, it requires both mom and dad, both parents, both heads of household to work. What was available and normal in 60s and 70s, 80s isn't remotely available now. Having one person stay home traditionally, take that kid to the earlier practice, show around town when it's lit. As society changes, we need to change with it. Me and Silva had a conversation and he eloquently talked about it. There is opportunities, we need to make sure that is equitable. Parents get off work if they're, if they're fortunate enough to work in our community in Vacaville, they're off work earlier. They can barely make it to there. But if you're a traveling commuting, you are at, don't have the ability to give your kid the same opportunity to play sports and do outdoor activities because the sheer commute time, trying to get home and get back out. Like as society's changed, we need to adapt with it. Yeah, it, it wasn't normal to have lit fields, all these things in the 60s, 70s. But it wasn't normal to have the median income household have to break six figures to stay out of poverty. So as things have changed, we have to change with it. So I, I feel passionate about not going too far in the conversation now because we were going to get deep into it this, on this Friday. Because I really feel that, you know, yes, pickleball wasn't around nine years ago. Pickleball's here now. There's been a huge shift in America. I mean, a lot of it is from concussions football. Football's not as popular as it used to be. There's other sports that have absolutely taken over and they are, they are sprawling. Soccer, there's a lot of things we need to think about. So I don't want to jump and say, yeah, we need everything. We need to figure out how we're going to pay for this because it is property, it is taxed. And as time goes on, it's going to be harder to keep throwing these lofty ideas out and like magic versus pay for it. So we need to figure out what is the most effective way. But investing in our kids, investing in our, our older kids, our, our adults is important. I mean, we spend a lot of money every year per inmate. We kind of really look at investing back in the kids and the community before they get down that point. I mean, we spend like a lot, about $56,000 per inmate. We need to think, how much money do we invest per kid in our community? We need to make sure they're mentally and physically well and fit. And these things, yeah, they are costs, nothing's free in life. But we need to invest into our communities and sports, peers, coaches. I mean, without some of the coaches I've had in my life, I probably wouldn't be here. I mean, the coaches that I had, they were my second dad. They were my second mentor. They were the person that nudged you, talked to you. It's an awesome opportunity to make sure people are in sports and outdoors. Lights are important. We need to have access. We can't make sure there's a barrier entry to all athletics. Or we can't pay to play, sorry, you're the wash from the fence. We need to make sure that as a city, as we grow, we create opportunities for investing in these, these grant programs to allow kids to get in sports. I mean, if 150 is enough, then we need to fund it. If we need more, if a kid wants to play sports and do something that's productive, we got to get the opportunity. So I support it wholeheartedly. I do understand this is baseball. This is something that we need to be, do good, our commitment to them. But I don't think should stop there. And I think we're, I think all of us on Friday are passionately thinking about how can we make sure across the board that it's equitable for all athletics and outdoor activities to thrive in the city? And we'll figure it out. But I, I don't want you to leave just thinking baseball for some reason is unique. Baseball's absolutely amazing, but as society goes, athletics and outdoor entertainment, we need to make sure that we create a community that people want to live in. Like I don't want to say I'm going to leave Vacaville because we're not making it fun to live in for sports. A lot of people stay here. So I think it's, it's very passionate and sports has really changed my life. And I think it's really important to really, need to invest in it.
Hold on, hold on. It's, we're, we're, we're in order right now, so the public is close. But I appreciate your, your question's not lost on the council. Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thank you for the information. So is there one lighted field now at Arlington and one lighted field at Centennial?
Correct.
And so this will be two fields lit at each place? And then are there then two other fields that will be unlit?
That is correct as well. The, the, the fields that are being lit are the, the larger fields, the full-scale fields. So you can see this is Centennial, that's the larger field, and the same thing at Arlington.
So that's why I was asking, because I thought the larger field would have been lit first. But we have one smaller field already lit and now we're doing the second, the larger field.
Correct.
And then the other two are unlit. So we're not whole-scale lighting everything. We're just increasing it again by 25%.
Right.
At that time. And I also was concerned when we were talking about Parks and Rec months ago and we said there's a waiting list for basketball or there's a waiting list for gymnastics. Is there a waiting list for baseball? Or do people just have to go to, from field to field and try to find an empty field and have practices at random times?
Complex.
Director of Parks and Recreation.
For baseball, there's really not a waiting list, but for spring baseball, the Parks and Rec Department does not. We allocate fields to the Little League, so it's not under the Parks and Rec Department. But as far as I understand, there's not a waiting list for baseball at this time.
Then you can probably answer part two of my question. Do the, the, the Little Leagues are paid to play? Do they pay anything to the city for the use of the fields?
They do. They pay a nominal fee. It's called a per-player fee. So they don't rent the field because that would probably put them out of business if they put, paid their rental fee. So historically, we've charged them a per-player fee, which is drastically reduced to ensure that they can pay for their umpires, you know, bases, everything that takes to, to run their league. So.
But they do pay a nominal fee?
Yes.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Thank you for that answer. I have just a couple of thoughts. Might be a question in here for you, but what I'm hearing, and I appreciate the comments from, from the public tonight, I think the hard part is, is how, you know, it's a sticker shock when all of a sudden you say, how did we get it this far off? You, you touched on it. Because I know that if we're, if we're controlling our own budget, we have to answer to the public saying, are you really going to spend this kind of money for lights? And so I wanted your thoughts on that because we do prioritize. So this doesn't just come with a few people in the room. This goes through Parks and Rec, it goes through master planning, it goes through community meetings and listening sessions. So I just wanted you to comment on that and then I'll move on.
The budget process and the setting up of the estimate is a, it is a lengthy process. And typically it takes engineers on the public work side a fair amount of time to evaluate the, the scope of work, dive into the details with the project sponsor. In this case, it was Parks and Recreation, and to develop those, those cost estimates. In this case, as I mentioned earlier, this project, you know, with the urgency that the Little Leagues had, as they had come up to council and pleaded their case as to the necessity and their desire and need for lighting these particular ball fields, that process was expedited and with a sense of urgency to get that project in the queue. A number was derived and it was set up at $840,000 and then handed to Public Works. And then we started the preliminary engineering and then discovered that, you know, this is not enough money. And it's, it's simply woefully inadequate based on the, the market research that we've been doing and with other municipalities as to, you know, what, what kind of cost is it, you know, to light two full-size ball fields? Like I mentioned earlier, it's. Like I mentioned earlier, it's approximately in the range of about $2 million and that's what we're seeing around the Bay Area.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to expand on that in part in response to where I think we're also going in terms of priority. How did, how did we get here? How did we select this? And so.
That's a word I wrote down as priorities.
Okay. So, so seeing as how I was kind of at the forefront of this, this assignment, this happened during, you know, the pandemic and, you know, our state, the country, the world shut down. And there's a variety of different factors that were, were happening, that were brewing. We had, for the first time in our city's history, we were moving from an elected body of five council members to seven with six districts for the first time ever in our city's history. We were hearing loudly from our community that they wanted opportunities to get out there and recreate, to get out and do something. So to address the health issues and everything that was going on. There was a time, just as a reminder, we had to shut our parks down. We had to shut things down with our play fields and, and basketball hoops and everything because it's close proximity to one another and everything. So when the state began to start opening and relaxing some of those guidelines, we were listening very clearly to the comments that we were receiving from our community. And the other piece that was occurring at that same time is their Parks and Rec Department, along with the Parks and Rec Commission, was completing a very lengthy, in-depth, involved process with their Parks and Rec Master Plan, where they were looking at everything in our community that we had to offer, that we did offer, that we didn't offer, where were opportunities for improvement, what were some of the facilities that we really needed to make, you know, complete the community and in terms of priority. And so when you put all those factors together, we came to the city council back as part of the 21 budget with the newly expanded council at that time. And it was my hope that we could use our Measure M revenues to quickly invest back into the community. Wanted to let them know that we were here, that we were listening and that we were trying to reinvest back into their districts, to their neighborhoods, to give them something, you know, that would give them a reprieve from what I called the COVID coma, you know, because we were all waking up and we, we wanted to get out there and do something. And so when you put all those factors together, we looked at the priorities of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We tried to identify a neighborhood park in each district that was highly ranked in, in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And then on a community wide level, because the mayor represented citywide, it was like, how do we, you know, put some investment into a community wide benefit as well? And so that's how we got there, honestly, is, is that you look at all those factors and those pieces and we presented that to the council, the council at the time and said, this is an opportunity to make investments into every area of the community and for the members who have been anxious to get back out and play. And, you know, there's a whole nother conversation about what lighted ball fields do for, you know, the, the competitive leagues. And, you know, that conversation's been had a lot at the Parks and Rec Commissions and it definitely, you know, increases the capacity for our youth to go out there and play and expands it, you know, not just because of nighttime hours and everything, but it opens up more opportunities. The thing that I misjudged is the, the resources and timing and everything that would be required to, to do all of this. And then the impending, you know, supply shortfalls and, and the inflation. And so, but that's how we got to where we selected these projects. We've identified them, we've stuck with them. We're going to give you an update on Friday as to where we're at with those because our team has been working very diligently on those. It has taken some time because it's not just a simple matter of going out and throwing some grass and putting on some, you know, lights that you get at Lowe's or Home Depot. So there are standards that we have to meet. It does take time and that's where we're at. But that's how we got to these particular projects. There was some, a lot of thought put into it. We had good conversations with the council at the time about these and the council had, had graciously supported those and that's why you see them in the budget today.
Thank you for that additional context. The, a couple of thoughts that I had, obviously weighing the cost benefit. Not to mention in the winter months, it's dark for most people even get home. And I've heard a lot of comments from the community and I would suspect that your, your stadium level lighting that you see at our high schools are, if they had to build the lighting today, it would probably be, be very expensive as time passes. And then these large baseball fields. I, I really do believe there's so much to benefit in the, in the whole area of community health and wellness when people are outside and they have a place to go. I know in, in previous meetings, I wasn't alone in some public comments on lighting is important because if the sun goes down and maybe there's lessons on, on, on a particular court. If you can activate our youth and also sports throughout a whole community, you just increase the, the vibrancy and the wellness of a community. And that's why I don't like the price, but I certainly appreciate what it does for our community. Draws people outside, it makes them healthier. It provides not only recreational activities for our community, but it, it does open up the competitive side, which does create sports stars, whether it's, you know, it's baseball or football. What about tennis or the, the future of basketball and pickleball and all the sports that are out there? That's why people want to live in the community. And so for that reason and all the, the discussions we've had about wellness, it, for me, it's, it's a definite benefit, although I don't like the cost. I guess the question that I had had, and it's no longer a question that you need to answer, is a lot has changed since '21. We've gone through all these, these impacts of costs, which is why I simply say when we look at priorities, which I know we will, they say, where else are we at risk if we don't re-prioritize our timing so that these windows, maybe the prices will come down once we, we settle down, but right now this is where we're at. And then lastly, I would just say that I think that there's also an opportunity in the future to have open discussions with our school districts. A lot of recreational activities that may be that there's opportunities. We provide services, the districts provide services, but I see a lot of fields and courts that gates get closed for security, but there once was a day when you could use those. I think it's an opportunity in the future. With that, seeing no more comments, does, do I have a motion on the council? There's two resolutions though, to approve both resolutions. Motion second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for the presentation and to the public, thank you for your comments. It's, it's definitely well understood, the concerns and the cost, but look forward to Friday's discussion. Vice Mayor Wiley, did you have a comment?
No, I pushed the wrong button.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, we can move on to item 9B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This last item for you tonight is the approval of the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan for our Community Development Block Grant. We have our Housing and Community Services Team here with Emily Can too, our director, and Tamara Colton, the Assistant Director, to give you a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, council members. Tonight I'm here to present the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 through 2024 Annual Action Plan. This plan aims to address the priority needs in our community and ensure the effective utilization of the funds allocated to us. The Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program or CDBG program provides federally funded grants to cities and counties with the goal of developing viable urban communities, providing decent housing and expanding economic opportunities. Since 1988, the city of Vacaville has been an entitlement city, receiving CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The primary focus is to benefit low and moderate income individuals, or those earning below 80% of area median income. And these requirements ensure that CDBG funds are directed towards those who need the most in fostering inclusive and equitable development within our community. The CDBG funds allocated to us locally are used to address priority needs identified in the city council's five-year consolidated plan. Current, these goals are to include supporting youth public services, improving public facilities and infrastructure, and addressing the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. The con and preparation that took place is for the 2020 through 2025 plan year and is included, a summary is included in the attachment to the staff report. The city of Vacaville receives approximately $500,000 a year and adheres to the statutory requirements to utilize CDBG funds for eligible activities and projects in accordance with our adopted five-year consolidated plan. The allocation of funds must also adhere to the use of, of the funds which they, which they are restricted to. This, on this slide, you'll see kind of a estimate of how those funds break down annually. For this upcoming program year, 2023 through 24, we have an annual funding allocation of $503,310, along with unspent funds from the previous years totaling $384,000 and a change. The draft annual action plan includes a total available funds of $887,703 and change to be used within the statutory, statutory requirements and allowable use of funds which are, which are restricted. For this current year, we have the allowable 20% of the annual allocation, which amounts to $1,662. That will be planned for planning and administration. These funds will be utilized for staffing, supplies and program administration, ensuring the smooth operation of the CDBG program. The allowable 15% of the annual allocation totaling $75,496.50 will be allocated to public services focused on youth development. These funds will support programs at the Vacaville Trower and Mariposa Neighborhood Centers that are operated by the Vacaville Neighborhood Boys and Girls Club and Levin Kids. The majority of funds, about 65%, amounting to $711,545, are planned to be dedicated to projects that improve public facilities and infrastructure. So the proposed projects for the coming fiscal year include fully funding the Mariposa Center, building improvements, playground and small dog park, and providing gap financing needed for sidewalk improvements at the corner of Brown Street, the southwest corner of Brown Street and East Monovista, East Monovista. So that's adding ADA ramps and sidewalk improvements. The draft annual action plan was made available to the public for review and comment. We followed HUD's process in providing a 30-day comment period by publishing notices in the Vacaville Reporter in both English and Spanish. Additionally, the action plan was made available on the city's website and emailed to agencies that either are included in the plan or community partners with the city that may have interest in the plan. As of today, we have not received any public comments from the plan that was originally posted. We have had several changes to the draft plan, draft plan in the version, in the public version, and they are tracked in the draft plan attached to the staff report tonight. And it does include some formatting and typographical error corrections that were also made. After accepting public comment and providing any comment, if approved today, we will incorporate any comments received and submit the final 23-24 Annual Action Plan to HUD by May 17, 2023, meeting the necessary submission requirements. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any public, public comment or comment from council.
Thank you for the presentation. Know that we'll start with questions and then we'll open it up to public comment and then we'll come back to the council for council comments. So questions, councilmember Stockton?
Well, thank you for the presentation, for securing the funds and giving us an idea of some of the options for, for utilizing them for our community. Is there any way that funds like this, whether under the youth public services or COVID-19 sections would allow for being put toward different amenities? I see that sidewalks could, we utilize some of this stuff for some of these park improvement plans and different things like that as well?
Oh, park improvements are considered an eligible activity for CDBG funds. The funds being used towards the youth services are part of public services and there is a cap to that, but public park improvements are an eligible use. That's why some of those funds are going towards the Mariposa Park improvements.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi. Thanks for the presentation. And just to clarify, this plan is, is usually a plan that's laid out in five year, like as a five-year plan, right? And I think we're in the third year? Yeah, third year of it. Okay, so, so I'm just curious, so the Mariposa Center, was that like, that was like a general, we allocated funds generally speaking and then prove use for that, for Mariposa?
At the Mariposa Center project, we had initially put Community Development Block Grant Project Funds aside to make improvements to the building. Then later we came to council and asked for some additional funding towards adding playground to the site that would be open to the public and also a small dog park. And there are district dollars also and Measure M dollars that were included with that to complete the project. We're asking tonight to fully fund it with some additional CDBG funds so we can get the project done.
So. Okay with that. Thank you.
Well, I'm just going to ask the question then, whether it's on the slide, can you show the documentation, the difference in the ass to complete the project, just so it's clear? I think that would help. Addition is where it's project.
Staff report? So, oh, I know it in my head. We originally allocated about $350,000, but in total we do need about, a little bit under $1 million to finish the entire project. Our suggestion tonight is to use the CDBG dollars that we do have available for this year and unspent funds from prior years to get that project done. And then, you know, next year we can have new activities using those project funds.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's helpful just because the difference between the two is the change mid, mid-plan here. Correct? Okay. And then if you could, just as a matter of understanding, the attachment is 58 pages, but there's a, there's a map and a legend in the attachment on the staff report that identifies three different target areas, Mariposa, Core and Leisure Town. Just for the public's benefit, could you explain that?
Yeah, so in the CDBG program, we have the ability to define target areas in which the, at least 51% of the residents in those areas are low or moderate income. And so during the consolidated planning period, we do analyze the income limits for the census tracts and census block groups during that time period to help us determine where our target areas will be for the CDBG program. So while we're not required to spend all the CDBG funding in those areas, we have identified those areas as low or moderate income areas for the CDBG program, for the city of Vacaville.
Thank you. I found it interesting in the visual diagram because not everybody would consider that a significant portion of Leisure Town is, falls within low, low income housing, which is a lot of the senior housing. And we often sometimes forget that. So I appreciate the, the information. The map actually made a very graphical representation of that. So the public gets to hear that that much. So appreciate it. With that, I want to open it up to the public for comments on this as required.
I'm resident. I just have a question about this CDBG projects and I know it's been around and I liked what your focus, but again, one of the things that I've noticed about Vacaville, and we're not immune to this, our homelessness is getting worse. The homeless population is getting worse. I'm seeing it at the grocery stores. I'm seeing them on the streets, all kinds of people, young, old. young, old, you know, and I've tried to reach out individually and, you know, help that person. I'm not sure if they're listening or not, or whatever the reason is for being out there in the streets. It's a hell of a place to be. Nobody should be living in the street, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know about you. But I would like to know if any funding from this CDBG is focused on the homeless issue and how to mitigate that, so we don't get to the level that I'm seeing in Sacramento, Oakland. It's horrific, and I'm hearing San Francisco, 65,000 people living in the streets. What kind of a society are we? I don't know about you, but it's to me immoral, crazy, and we shouldn't even have that. The government needs to step in, and you need to do the leadership to prevent that, regardless of what the circumstance of those people are. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll hold that question until we have all public comment.
It seemed like I was attacking the last time up here. So, and actually, I want to thank you guys for burying my logic with your smooth talk about why you should go forward with that. My point in that last, not this one, but the last topic was, there's a lot of voters out there. There's a lot of taxpayers, what, 70,000 residential houses out there that people pay taxes on? Why don't they get some say-so in this? I mean, you guys get elected, but who do you ever talk to that's out there that are concerned with you guys possibly spending too much money? My second part of this question was, when the light standards went in at Arlington years ago, first thing they did?
If you, here's what I would like to do, is I'd like to talk with you afterwards, because I can't, I can't entertain this conversation while this.
You can make it real quick.
Well, actually, we cannot, but I appreciate, I appreciate the ongoing dialogue, but you did bring up a question that I will ask on this issue, and that, and that is as representation of voters' comments, because there was zero voters' comments on this.
You should have a vote, let each resident.
Public, yeah.
But do you guys go to parks, the public parks that we're talking about? Not these, these are new ones that are coming. I got a list of 21 parks here that I went to last weekend. City Limits. Beautiful parks. I mean, if you added up all the square footage and acreage of the lawns, I mean, it takes a lot of water to water them.
Is there anything you'd like to comment on, on this particular item? Because this is the item.
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
These parks right here, these 21 parks that I went to, had a handful of people in them, and I checked periodically. Okay, so this is a study, it's mine, it doesn't matter to you guys, but our parks are underused. Now, to their, you know, this, this part right here, they're gonna add more parks for, I guess it's for underprivileged people. When, if you go to any one of these, they're just a short distance away, and they're for all people, not just underprivileged. So I'll be back, but thank you for your time. You all have a good evening, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this CDBG item? And then I want to close the public comment side of this and bring it back to the city council comments. I do not see any. Vice Mayor Wiley?
Nation, I also wanted to find out about public comments, because you said you did it exactly what you needed to do, was put it in the newspaper and post it, and then no one commented, but a lot of people don't get the newspaper. When you, and this is something you do annually, in the past, have you had public comment, or is it generally no one comments at all?
In the past, we have had participation and public comment. I'd like to add also that they do go out with the, on the Facebook page for the city, so that people are aware that the, the plan is available for review and comment, and comment can be accepted by email, coming into the office. We try to accept comment in various ways so that people have the opportunity to review the plan and provide feedback.
And I know it was in the report, but I just, I don't remember exactly. Was it a 30-day period, or how long did they have to comment?
Yeah, so the, we are, we need to provide a 30-day notice up until this date, so they've had 30 days up until this date, May 9, to provide comment, and we can continue to accept comment and incorporate it into the plan before it's due to HUD on May 17.
All right. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Stockton?
Thank you for the comments and for the presentation. This is federal money, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it's a five-year plan, and each year we roughly get about $500,000?
Yes.
What happens to the money if we don't spend it?
So the funding carries over to the next funding year, so for instance, in this year, we have $384,000 in funding that was unspent last year, that's carrying forward, and we can carry that forward for a total of six years. So we try to make sure that we spend the oldest funding first, so that there's no potential for HUD to take that funding back.
So after six years, that money disappears? Like, or it goes back to the federal government?
If it's not spent within that six-year period, then yes, they will.
Okay, so to use it or lose it, within six years?
Yes, you do need to use it or lose it within six years, and also HUD really wants us to spend the funds, so while they won't recapture the funds until six years, you can't have, for us, about $1.5 million cash on hand for too long of a time, or they're really on you to make sure you have a plan. They want those funds, like we all do, to get back out into the community and do what they're supposed to do.
So what governing body determines Vacaville's allocation?
It is HUD, and there's a formula allocation and a methodology of how the funds are split between the various communities in the United States.
And HUD is federal as well?
Federal.
Okay, and they're funded through the United States Congress and?
Yes. Yes, yeah, and so that, based on budget as well, you know, the federal budget impacts the amount the city used to get, $800,000, and now we get five, so the program itself has been cut over time, but it's been pretty steady over the last, you know, at least half dozen years, or a dozen years, or?
When you do the outreach for public comment, does it include the criteria or the things that the money can be used on? So there's the public made aware of, you know, the spectrum of where the money can be spent?
I would say with the consolidated plan, the five-year process, that's what that plan is for, to say, hey, here's what we can do, what are the priorities in the community? Your opinion on that? We need your feedback. Then we select the priorities. The annual action plan is really to report on the non-federal, like our housing activities, for example, are not through necessarily the CDBG funds, but other funding sources, and then our annual allocation, how we're gonna use that to meet the priorities. So I would say not in particular does the outreach say exactly what the funds could be used for.
And then, did you have a slide that showed what type of outreach you do? I know we discussed some of it, but?
So we do, we have a notice in the Vacaville Reporter.
Right.
We post on the website, we go through the city's social media, and then we do have a direct email, kind of a listserv of organizations that are either part of the plan, such as the Levin and the Boys and Girls Club, and other nonprofit organizations in particular that we reach out to, and we also work with, you know, our Public Works Department on, you know, helping us to identify priority public infrastructure projects, maybe like the sidewalk repair on Markham and Brown this year, that needed some help with some gap financing to get that done.
Is there any posting at the locations where you're actually doing work on these projects using these funds? On some development projects?
No, we haven't incorporated that to date.
Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. I just want to express my appreciation, the last time you came before us, about your, how you publicized, or how you were getting the information out to the residents or the people in need. And from your presentation this evening, I see that you, you expanded your outreach, and I'm happy to hear that.
And I'm just gonna follow up with a question that came from the public, and that was on homelessness. I know your presentation didn't go in very, you know, too deep. That report, really, you have to read through it, but you read the attachments. What I see is, is that there was the con plan goal number two, and when you really start getting into it, it starts speaking how to make sure that we, we support those who are vicariously housed because of, want them to become homeless. Can you speak specifically to any efforts that this, these funds are going towards homelessness or the prevention of homelessness?
Thank you, Mayor Carley, that's a great question. I would like to remind the council that in 2021, before the start of the, sorry, in 2022, before the start of this current fiscal year, we brought to council the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus or CARES funding, which was an allocation of approximately $826,000 in additional CDBG funding to help go towards the prevention, preparing for, and responding to COVID. Council at that time made the decision and really wanted to focus that funding to help the, those in need the most, that were most impacted by COVID. So you allocated $200,000 to Opportunity House for supporting their operations and assisting homeless persons. You also allocated $250,000 to the FRC and Police Department to specifically fund outreach for homeless persons who also are impacted by mental health issues or illness. In addition, you allocated approximately $140,000 to the Family Resource Center to provide emergency grant assistance to those that may have been impacted in some way by COVID for emergency rental payments, or emergency utility, or food assistance. So you have allocated quite a bit of funding to help address homelessness with, within the community with the CDBG CARES dollars.
Thanks for that. It's helpful to know, because sometimes it gets lost, and over time, what we're really expending to make sure that we're addressing homelessness, and I know that Vacaville, there's a strong advocacy to try and address the issues of homelessness and, and all that, its impacts are significant, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. I can follow up. Is there any way we can see how those funds, once they were allocated to the different departments, areas, nonprofits, how, how do you seek accountability for the use of those funds? Do you receive a report back from them?
Yeah, so with this CDBG program, we do collect information on the assistance provided with that funding. That's in the form of a quarterly report that either the subrecipients, or in many cases, the departments that receive the CDBG funding, will provide us back a quarterly report on how many people were assisted, because we do have to report out the number of people, basic demographics, income levels. We have to ensure that at least 51% of them meet that income level, and we do make sure that the funding that is being spent is being spent according to the activities that are proposed or that council intended.
Okay, now, I was referencing the CARES funds, not the?
That also extends to the CARES funding as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councilmember Silva? Yes, seeing, I think we've, we've accepted all the public comments and the council comments, and so? You have a motion?
I'd like to motion approve 9B.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for the presentation and all the work that you do to make sure that you manage these funds. It's very complex, but appreciate the update, and I appreciate the public comments on this as well. With that, Mr. City Manager?
I have no comments this evening, thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to reports to the city council. Councilmember Silva?
I'm gonna hold my comment earlier for another special time, but I want to thank County Supervisor John Vasquez, actually came out over two different weekends to help out a group of scouts to clear out some debris in front of this retaining wall that's been a side of gang graffiti more so recently, and so we got a lot of patchwork going on there. This project overall is truly scout, or excuse me, youth-designed, youth-led, and it's gonna be youth-implemented in the future. We're coming up with a tentative date to actually come in and paint it, so really excited to see that. What's really important about this, and we talk about community development, this effort is really, again, focused on how the youth see problem areas within their own community, and not just to like, say, hey, tell someone else to do something about it, or complain about it, but learn about why things are the way they are, and more so what they can actually do about it. And so I'm really looking forward to the actual day where, you know, a group of kids and across, you know, across our community, and anybody out there is welcome as well, I think, to come out and actually participate on putting up this mural. It'll be a mural that kids kind of fill in this differentiated box, and I'll have this kind of kaleidoscope theme going on there. The areas, in many ways, I've seen it, like even just today, there was an older couple walking, and they were picking up, you know, different trash and debris that kind of gets blown around this particular sump-down area along Markham area in particular. There's been past community service projects there, there's future aspiring community service projects to go on there, and so I just want to plant for council's mind, and I'm gonna talk with city manager in the future, but one of the things that's been a challenge, particularly because it's the people's property, is how we go about a fair and open process to allow a different agencies or groups, youth groups who want to contribute to some, you know, greater good, to do some type of community service project, and maybe possibly with further discussions, this area could be an easy area that we can kind of map out, maybe it's a part of this neighborhood plan or whatnot, but this can be an area where, one of maybe a few throughout the city can be a concentrated area where folks need community service projects. We have a list of projects or concepts that we need to prove, and just need folks to step up when and how they're available, so just kind of flatten that out there. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, getting back to some of the presentations that we did today and the relevance of things that are happening in our community, this past Saturday, I had the honor of attending the Tyler Switzer Memorial Golf Tournament, a young man that was a police cadet with our community, also served as a United States Marine in our armed forces that unfortunately passed away in an accident last year. An absolute outpouring of support from our small business community, another reason why our small businesses are the backbone of our nation is because they're involved in our day-to-day lives, and when they're successful, communities are successful. They certainly came to help out, as well as many of our local first responders throughout the county came as well to show support. The newly established Marine Corps League came out and cooked hot dogs, and they raised a significant amount of money for a mental health, or a mental health outfit called E5 Therapy that provides mental health services for veterans that come back, that need to unpack some of the things based upon their, their service and their experience overseas or in that line of work. Which leads me to Police Officer Appreciation Week. I'm a sergeant with the Solano County Sheriff's Office, and it is not lost that this council made comments tonight in a proclamation from our mayor about valuing what our police officers do in our community. And the relationship between that service to our community and mental health is one that cannot be missed. I see and hear stories about so many people that struggle with mental health, not only in the military, but in law enforcement, and that stigma about getting help is something that I think we can honor the people that we've lost by trying to help those that are still with us but maybe struggling, and so, again, I appreciate the commitment that the council and the community is making in regards to those efforts, and I applaud E5 Therapy for kind of one of our newer groups that's, that's popped up to try to provide some of those services. Unfortunately, this is also a grave time for law enforcement. Unfortunately, this is also a grave time for law enforcement throughout the country. Or, you know, certainly when we reflect upon the losses of people who've paid the ultimate price in our community. Solano County Sheriff's Office on May 24th is having a police officer's memorial. It's a very solemn event. It's about a half an hour, but it is an absolutely incredible way to demonstrate to your children and to you, you know, to your community, the sacrifice that some of these people, these brave men and women have made for, for our safety and the quality of life in our communities. So I would encourage folks to come to that. I heard a story today. At work, I, I happened to go to the board supervisor meeting where they were giving some of these similar proclamations and there was one on law enforcement as well related to the, the fallen police officers. And there was a deputy back in 1985, Jose Cisneros, lost his life out on Pleasance Valley Road. There's a bridge that is named after him at the Cherry Glen Extension because the, he, he was killed in that area. And under Sheriff Brad DeWall told a story about there was recently a cold case homicide that was solved based upon evidence that Jose Cisneros found when he was alive. And so, you know, just even after 40 years, almost 40 years, he's still serving our communities. These people that have paid the ultimate price have still done things in their, in their life of service to our communities that are helping us find closure even in the darkest of times. And so I think we have an absolutely incredible community and it's because we don't miss the little stuff like this. We have a community of citizens and businesses and, you know, our, our senior citizen, which is our fastest growing population, I think, in California, that, that, that really are part and embedded in, into our community and what we're doing and making sure that the folks up here are held accountable. I appreciate the comments of accountability that you made, sir. They, they don't fall on deaf ears. We do have to make difficult decisions, but we deserve to hear your concerns and, and, and really think hard before we make those decisions. So I wish we could get more public outreach. I wish we can get 337 applicants for every position that we have out here. But it is amazing to see our community continue to show up for some of these extra fundraisers that are driven through, through the public and these different nonprofit organizations that try to address some of the stuff that we made proclamations about today. So.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
I have several random things here to share, but we were talking about district dollars. So I want to say that the District Six spruce up day last Saturday was a big success. And we had about over 200 loads were dropped into five debris bins, which had to be emptied multiple times. I haven't got the total numbers yet, but we got a lot of unnecessary items out of backyards, garages and cleaned up our space in District Six. And that couldn't have happened without the 40 volunteers that we had. And it was great. We had some volunteers from last year that came back, some new ones from the community. And also happy to say that we had Vacaville Powell volunteers there as well as some of the junior high people as well. And Rika Gidry, who's the program director, was instrumental in helping getting it all organized. And recology drivers and supervisors were wonderful, being there, helping, helping us out all day. So it was a great activity and we didn't haul it all out. Some men brought a chair and took home a chair. Some people brought home bikes that they hadn't had. If there was something that was good and didn't need to go to the landfill, we set it aside for the taking. And so it's kind of a swap meet as well. And we helped small businesses because we had Holy Mo's Hot Dog Cart and we served 200 hot dogs. So it was a great day. And plan on coming to the third one in 2024. And so that was in District Six. And also in addition to all the other proclamations and special weeks, this is also Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank a teacher for what she did. If you still have, know a teacher that you had in sixth grade, tell them thank you for helping you in your educational way. I'm on the Yellow Solano Air Quality Management Board and we have a new area director. And tomorrow she will be visiting Vacaville and seeing where we are here. And so I'm excited to be able to tell her a little bit about Vacaville. And for that, oh, that's Thursday she's visiting. Tomorrow we have a meeting, so I will miss the visit Vacaville breakfast. So I can't support small business, but I have a meeting I have to go to. And I would just say the parking discussion at Play For All Park, it is a really utilized park. And parking is an issue, so I hope that we can, you know, follow up on what we can do. When we had the BU event two weeks ago, I am an older American, but I'm fairly spry. So I parked on the other side of the street thinking I'd walk over and save the parking for someone who might have more of an issues getting to the park. But I parked there across the street on Leisure Town, so I couldn't just cross the street. I had to go south and then east and then north before I could go. So it just, it is, I had never noticed that there wasn't a crosswalk right there. And I guess it's because there's not a sidewalk on that other side. So it just took three crosses instead of one, but I made it safely there and back. So that's good. And my last comment, if you know of anyone who's interested in learning more about being a home daycare provider for people in Vacaville or specifically base people as well, we are having a special training this Thursday that the base people are putting on to tell people what they would need to do to become a certified home daycare provider. Because really Vacaville needs more of those for all the working people that we have. So this Thursday, there's two sessions. One's at three o'clock and one's at five o'clock. And they're both at the Travis One Credit Union up on, on the hill. And that will be for people to find out more about what they need to do if they're interested in becoming an in-home daycare provider. So those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you so much. I'll try to keep it short. You know, it's, it was interesting, I guess, it kind of stop and reflect from this meeting to the last meeting, what really happened. First of all, I want to thank the mayor. I asked for a proclamation and he granted it for one of the United States oldest African-American women sororities, Alpha, Alpha Cop Alpha. So I had the opportunity to present and have a declaration and proclamation on behalf of the mayor and the council. It was amazing to see an organization that's been around for a long time. And the women at the chapter in Solano County and throughout the country and how we were able to honor that amazing group. It was, it was very, it was a special highlight for me to watch and listen to history of that rich sorority and how they have affected so many families, how they're giving back to the community and have the chance to honor them. I think really to highlight myself and Silva, it's been the weekend in soccer, but that's a different story, but you know, the soccer watching my kids was amazing, but my highlight really was I had the opportunity to, to attend and the National Day of Prayer event here in Vacaville. It was something that was amazing. I know you have church and state, so that's what's talking about it, but I don't follow that many rules all the time. It's, it's something, you know, I feel like there's scenes of taboo in this world. You know, there's like, I'll talk about politics, finance, or, you know, religion, the three things people are ignoring it, right? It's, it's, it's really the truth, but besides talking about the faith in that room, there's a passion. There's a huge passion of leaders in that room that besides their faith, they, they had a heart for the community. And you've had conversations that were not about faith. They just, every day they get up from, there's air force personnel from Travis to city leaders, educators, that every day they try to make someone's life better. And so it's amazing. There's so many like silent heroes in this community. And joining that kind of event really lets you know that we have a special place. I mean, it's, it was amazing to see how everyone came together for positive opportunity. So like that was that comment, it's like, there's so many people out there in this community that secretly are rooting for everyone to succeed. And I just, it was an indication and kind of aha moment that we need to have kind of grace and realize that everyone's trying to the right, the majority are trying to the right thing. But it was, it was a good reminder to me that a lot of people are going in the same direction in this community and, and it was very empowering. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments real quick. One of the things that really was a takeaway tonight and it's an important one in that is, is there's not a lot of civic engagement in the city of 100,000. For all of you and staff, you sit here and you listen and, and people come and go based upon what their item is and then they leave and don't really have, you don't have a lot of engagement. And hard to tell what's changing, but again, the comment of people not necessarily subscribing to a newspaper anymore. Things are very different in the way we engage. And I think this is a common question that we have as a council is we want people's input and that's part of what local government is. And when we don't get it, sometimes the assumption is, is that we are ill-informed to make sound decisions. That could be partially true. It could also be to the degree that any one of us seeks to find out information in the public ourselves and question. And I, I wholeheartedly believe that the council here tonight is out there seeking input from people regardless of whether it's coming in through a, a channel that we're used to. But it is important. So that question's not lost. On that though, there are two commissions for those in the public who aren't always fully aware of how our governance work. Our Parks and Rec Commission and our Planning Commission. And so a lot of the work that's done before it gets to council is really dive into the council or the public comments, whether it's a master plan for a park or if we're looking at planning. And so those are opportunities that are also means for that type of comment that can come to us before it even gets to, let's say, tonight. And so there's, there's opportunities for people to serve in those commissions and there's opportunities that are posted every month on the same location that this council meeting is posted to actually attend and listen and look at those agendas so that, just like your concerns are, there's, there is a body that, that serves this council that focuses directly on parks and recreation and everything that's of interest to you. I appreciate that. And then lastly, of comments, appreciate obviously with, with my history in public service in the police. But the reality is, is the, the, the mental health and wellness component, we've been through a pandemic. We all understand it, whether it's, it's personally or professionally, how it's impacting us. Can't turn on the news or you look at social media, everything about what life is, is important to value. The relationships and, and what it's going to take to get there. I appreciate the work that our staff does on it. That's the reason, one of the reasons why we do our proclamations. It's the work of our staff and in our community. And I would be remiss if I didn't. I do a lot of work in the area of wellness as well. I did it while I was chief and also now as I focus on wellness. And the average first responder responds to nearly 190 critical incidents. Career. The average citizen is one or less. And that compartmentalization occurs even with our military veterans who come back and then they assimilate back in society and they're in our communities and they're, they're in our families. And that includes the fire department. Fire department sees more as every call is usually some form of a medical crisis of some sort. And so it's not lost on, on me and I'm certain what I'm hearing tonight, the importance of making sure that we care. All of our staff at, at this particular time, the wellness of, of our community, but also of our staff is really important. So pass that along to the fire department as well. With that, that ends my comments. I don't see anything else. So at this point, we will, we have no closed session, so we will adjourn. Good night, Vacaville.